Okay, it is Tuesday, 7 December 2021 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees meeting to order, and I have a short invocation as we have. As Lord, as we remember and commemorate those lost in the attack 80 years ago on the United States at Pearl Harbor and ensuing wars where we lost people, we ask you to bless those who are still serving and to protect our liberty and freedom and can't be with their families in this joyous season. We ask you to watch over all of our police and first responders during this busy stressful time, and we pray for the peace in our community, our country, and throughout the world. Roll call, please.
House TV Matt.
Here.
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 Moonan.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
House TV Zeiss. Absent.
Okay, item two. Review and approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of 2 November and special village board meeting of 16 November. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. And any comments, questions, or corrections, amendments? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three is comments from the floor, which is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities either on or not on today's agenda, and mark this podium and identify and state your business, please.
My name is Mark Garrity, G-H-E-R-T-Y, 747 Garrity Lane, Town of Hudson, 54016. I'm here tonight specifically for information, and I'll keep it short because I talked to the clerk on Friday. I will keep this short because I hope to be back here next month in front of you on a formal presentation. I have been working for the past 35 months on a program to hopefully develop the Union Pacific Bridge. Mr. Wecken and I had a discussion about it with Mr. Coulter, and what we're attempting to do is carry that all the way through as a bike trail and park to the city of Hudson and connect up with the city trails in Hudson and be the gateway or the keystone for connecting Interstate Bridge North or I-94 and the Crossing Bridge, Highway 64 eventually. So, this opportunity is there, but the big thing is, what's happened over since Mr. Wecken and I had our discussion is, we have taken a step back from the standpoint of just going out and buying it to find out what the plan would be. And during the course of 35 months, we've discovered answers to the question, who's going to own it? There's five acres, 5.8 acres, that's being used by, I don't necessarily say owned by, the Union Pacific because a railroad right-of-way is subject to federal grant. And once the railroad, according to the Rails and Trails Legislation from 1988, if the railroad declares that they've abandoned that, it then goes possibly to the next person that may be interested in establishing a trail. And so, there's a lot of litigation, and the village attorney can investigate that. But it's a situation, the answer to the question that has been asked since the beginning of this, who's going to own it? Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to pay for it? And never have I forgotten those questions. The answer is, and we've discovered as a result of the county laying out who owns what, that parcel of property essentially surrounding the railroad property, you own it, along with the village. The village, the county, and the city all own the property together. And that's along the lake shore, and then interior is owned by part of the county, the city, and there's a whole stretch sitting in the city of Hudson. You own six lots, owned by village, county, city, and that's on that, the hillside there on the east bank of Lake Malaloo. So, I am going to give you, and I told, we just finished with the park board at 5 o'clock with the town or city of Hudson, that they have approved moving this on to the city council. There's a resolution attached to this, there's history for this. Those of you that don't know anything about it, if I have permission, Mr. President, to at least, I'll pass those out, and that'll be the end of my presentation.
That'll be fine.
Okay, so, and I have one, and sir, I've not told you your name, the village attorney.
Paul Mahler.
Paul, thank you. So, I'll leave them, and then I'd ask for, I appreciate your time to let me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Okay?
So, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then back in front of the park board next month, with a meeting on the resolution. All we're asking the park board to do is refer the resolution on to you so that you can take action on it. And that's the only thing that's been done by Park Board of the city of Hudson, and my discussions with Mr. Condon last week, the situation of the application. The reason that timing is important is, we have the opportunity to the River Trails Conservation Assistance Program to the National Parks, the RTC-A, and they offer services that would facilitate bringing the county, the village, and the city together to discuss how one would use this property. And that's what we're asking for, the resolution, not having to pay anything. This is all free service from them, but we have to apply for it. And again, it's a situation of the representative from this board, or if it was Mr. Nelson from the park board being the representative, that's how it would work. But I'll tell you more about that when I come back. So, it's all laid out there in the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a wonderful holiday.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, then. Item four. 2022 Mobile Home Park License, Pamela Zappa, approval requested. Is there a motion?
Stan, move to approve the 2022 Mobile Home Trailer Park Permit for Pamela Zappa.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Amy. Discussion. Questions? Comments?
So, my only question was on the fee, the $25 fee, and I'm just wondering if that's, if we've got a plan to review the fees.
That's by statute. That's what you can charge.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for the question, Mary. Yeah, I don't know how many, we've been doing this, I think ever since I've been involved in the village business, so, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of the Mobile Home Park License for Pamela Zappa, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item five. Recommended Appointment of Scott Snyder to Fill Vacant Positions on the Police Commission, Approval Requested.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. And we had, one of our police commission members is moving out of the town, I believe, or out of the village, and, and I've discussed with the chief and to get somebody that could fill the spot. Scott Snyder is, was recommended. He has been on the board of trustees here. He's been, served on numerous committees, and, and so, I, you know, I think he will be a good fit on the police commission. Any other comments or questions?
Just to clarify the process, so, this is the nomination, the village president makes the nomination? Is that how that works, or did the chief make the nomination?
Basically, an appointed position.
Appointment.
I mean, so, you know, similar to what we have with the next item on the agenda, but yeah, it's, it's not where we go out and, you know, beat the bushes or whatever, you know. I mean, the biggest thing is with police commissions is to be able to get along with the chief. I think, you know, I mean, because, you know, and then, and they deal with the officers and everything else, so, Mark, is there anything you'd like to comment?
So, I guess maybe to address Mary's question a little bit, it was a person that I brought to stand as an option. I had talked to Mr. Snyder about it prior to recommending his name to President Wecken, but the police commission really is the hiring, firing, and promotional committee within the village, and so, it's important to have people on that commission that have some interest in the village, and obviously putting good officers on the street, or at least recommending good officers on the eligibility list. The person that we lost had a considerable amount of background in HR as a person that had retired as a vice president of a company, and so, when I talked to the police commissioners about, you know, what we might be looking for to fill that, that was their interest because not all of them have that experience, and when I talked to Mr. Snyder, he does have experience in hiring and firing and unions, and so, although the police commission in a situation where an officer may be disciplined would be more of the judicial branch, if you will, he does understand the idea of going out or going to arbitration and having issues with unions and whatnot, and so, I thought he would be a good person to recommend to the village president for assignment.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving Scott Snyder is to fill the position on police commission, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item six. Recommended Appointments on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Approval Requested. Is, and then we might as well take those one at a time. The first is for Tom Coulter for chair.
Stan, I move to approve Tom Coulter as a chair of Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. And the reason this opening has occurred this time of year is, our longtime chair of the appeals commission is moving out of the North Hudson after, I don't know, they got me 30-plus years, I think, you know, down on, on the Alahad, and in fact, his wife was, she taught both my kids at North Hudson, you know, so they've been here a long time, and they're moving on, so.
She was my teacher.
Need to fill the spot, so, and Tom is on the board, he's got experience as far as, or he's on the committee, and he's been county chair, or I mean, on the, as a county commissioner, and has other experience business-wise, so he has accepted the nomination if so approved. Is there any other comments or questions there? Hearing none. All in favor of Tom Coulter as chair of Board of Zoning Appeals, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with the opening and a position to fill, Brian Burns has expressed interest in being involved in, he's a resident up on 10th Street in Hut, in North Hudson, and he has expressed interest in being, getting more involved in the village committees or.
Stan, can I, can I move to approve Brian Burns to fill the vacated position?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Any other comments from what I made? I mean, this committee, I think, eh, we were once or twice a year, I think, this is, that's how it's easy to get volunteers for this one, so, I mean, but.
Those of you that know him feel confident that he will be a good contribution, make a good contribution.
Yeah, Brian knows him, I mean, we've met, you know, and yeah, he's, he's, he's good, he's a good person. Uh, it's, and he's good, you know, he's married, and, and, you know, and I think he's here for the long haul. So, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of Brian Burns to fill the position on Board of Zoning Appeals, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven. Election Inspector's Appointment for 2022-2023 Term, Approval Requested. Is there a motion?
Dan, I move to appoint the following Republican and Democratic election inspectors.
Can't you just say as is?
Elise Multer.
Walter.
Andrew Smith. Betty Goodwin. Donna Stolman. Elizabeth Gustafson. Joyce Law. Linda Savlin. Nancy Walls. Phyllis Hole. Rebecca Dodge. Robert Sizik. Sandra Ludke. Sarah Dobbins. Carol Finneren. Mary Ann Hanley. Gene Schneider. Deb Monakin. Margaret Wopat. John Borup. Jennifer Borup. And Daniel Schmidt for the term of January 1, 2022, to January 31, 2023.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Just to clarify, December 31st.
Did I say December 31st?
I believe you said January, but just to clarify.
Oh, to December 31st, 2023.
Thank you.
And forgive me if I murdered your name.
Okay, is there any comments or questions on the election inspectors? These are both submitted to the.
Second.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Kirk got it. We're both trying, like, no, no.
Sorry.
No, no.
There you go. Shorten her up. But the, the, they submit the list of candidates to Melissa, and, and it's basically, yes, approval, you know, both, you know, that's equally represented, and they just work the tables and do observations or whatever, so, it's, you know, everybody's equally represented. So, any other comments or questions?
President Wecken, my husband is on the list, so I'm not going to vote, I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? All in favor of the election inspector appointments for 2022-2023, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item eight. New Business from the Board or Staff. And first is President's Comments. And my first comment will obviously be, I want to thank most everyone for their patience in waiting for the road to get done. I think everybody can appreciate having the bridge and everything back to pretty much normal, and yes, we are very aware that there is a bump on the bridge. And we have, the state is very aware the bump is on the bridge, the county, and, and I've noticed that if you're actually driving the speed limit, or a little less, it's not that noticeable. So, you know, and that's one of the things I know that the chief and I have discussed is that we, all along, we said when it opens up, you know, that's, they're going to get a little quick out there, and obviously, the, the speed is an issue, and we're monitoring that, and we hope that everybody will remember that through the village from Summer Street to the bridge is 25 miles an hour. Everybody has a hard time keeping their cars to 25 miles an hour, but please make the effort, it's doable. And finally, I would like to say, I hope everyone has a safe and Merry Christmas and a blessed and happy new year. Melissa?
Let's have a couple things. The spring election will be on Tuesday, April 5, 2022. Any residents who are interested in running for village board can pick up the necessary paperwork at the village hall. Paperwork must be filed with the clerk by 5 o'clock PM on Tuesday, January 4, 2022. There are three village trustee positions up for reelection. Also, tax bills should be mailed out within the next week, and to kind of go along with that, our holiday hours will be posted on the village website, so please note the village hall will be closed on New Year's Eve this year, so please plan ahead if you're planning to pay your taxes before the end of the year.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, item nine is planned commission, and the chair's not here, so Paul, did you get to that yet?
Yep, I was there. There was one item, and that was the, the commercial development on the north end of town, and there was a discussion. The applicant came back with a new plan, reduced the lots from four to three. There are two, two requirements in the village. One is that a lot front on a public street, the other is that a lot is served by a public street, and by reducing the number of lots, he complied with the first, meaning all three of the lots front on a public street, namely 35. However, the interior lots did not front on a public street. So, we had some discussions back and forth on options, and I think, you know, the general plan, there wasn't much of an objection to, and, you know, sort of the recommendation was, if you wanted to, you know, utilize this plan, you'd have to go and get a variance to allow those two interior lots to be served with an easement. The other alternative was to go with a condo-type development. I don't know, I think the applicant certainly was more interested in seeking a variance. I don't know what his plan is going forward with, whether he did that or not, but that's sort of where we left it. I think the project is doable. I didn't hear a lot of objections from the plan commission members about it, but it just, he's going to need a variance, or he's going to need a condo to get it done.
Thank you. That is it. Okay, item 10. Personnel and Finance Committee Recommendations, Claims, Approval Requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the December 3, 2021, non-recurring claims of $206,697.49?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. Comments, questions?
Melissa, you want to fill us in where the big extra numbers are from?
Uh, yes, so under the conservation and development, the 12,325, that includes tree removal due to the storm that we had in September, and the other big number is in the capital outlay, and the majority of that, about 159,000, is due to the Highway 35 project to the Wisconsin DOT.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing none. It's claims, Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item B. Purchase of New Copier for General Government and Public Works Offices, Approval Requested.
Stan, I move to purchase a new Rico C4500 copier from E.O. Johnson for the General Government and Public Works Office at a cost not to exceed $6,625, with funds to come from the use of available funds account to be paid for in 2022.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion. I think everybody saw in their packet, the, you know, that the issue, the, ours is eight, eight years old, and it's showing signs of deterioration, but we can keep it and use it for scanning a lot of other documents, but we need a little upgraded system, so, and we do have the funds, so I think it's a good addition to the office area, so, let's see, that's purchased, so Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And let's see. 2022 Contracts Discussion Approval Requested. First one is Building Inspector's Only Administration Contract, Brian Word Agency.
Stan, can I move to approve Brian Word Agency as our building inspector and zoning administrator, agreed to the period of January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2023?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. Discussion.
So, we just made a motion for a one-year contract, and is that our standard? The, the draft that we received is a two-year contract?
The draft you got actually is a three-year.
24?
Yeah, it's all of '22, all of '23, and to the end of '24.
Oh, right, you're right, yeah.
So, they did it for two years because technically the appointment of the building inspector's two years, so to coincide with it. Those changes on there you see came from Brian Word, so.
So, so we're discussing a one-year contract?
No, it's two.
Two-year.
It's just the dates are mixed up because it looks like it's longer. He sent us a three-year, but that's not what we're supposed to be, so we're supposed to have a two-year.
So, the motion was for a two-year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. See, contracts should probably be a roll call. Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Oh, item two. Animal Impounding Service Contract with Woodbury Animal and Humane Society at Finance. We did not receive any information on that, so we tabled that to next month's meeting. And finally, number three. Animal Warden Contract. Is there a motion?
Stan, can I move to approve the animal war contract with Thera Hall?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion.
Um, it was brought up that there was an incident, but Chief and Public Safety went over all of it, so his name has been cleared up, and it was kind of just a really big misunderstanding.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there any other comments?
So, same question, so the terms of this contractor for one year, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none. Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item 11, moving right along. Public Works Committee Chair Update. Brian?
Um, let me just say to our residents, we're well aware of the bump, as Stan said, and Melissa has posted up on our website the numbers that you really should be calling. It's under the 35 project.
It's under the, yes, and at the bottom of the page is their phone numbers.
Okay, so there's phone numbers there if you want to help us. I mean, it's a state project, as Stan said, we don't have anything to do with that bump. We offered to fix the bump, and they won't let us fix the bump, so it's really, if you want to push to get that bump fixed, please contact the state, that would help us a lot. And then, Stan, we also did meet and have a contract for trees to approve, and I am making a motion to approve the down-to-earth tree service contract for, is this three years?
Three.
Three years.
Second.
Thank you. Is there comments or questions? I think Patrick handed out the bids that we got, and, and like I said earlier, one of the, I think, kudos to the board and to the staff, is that we try to get the best price on anything, and with, Patrick has worked with both groups, and, and they both do a great job, so, and we get, getting a better deal out of the other service, so we decided to give them a shot, so. Any other comments or questions?
I would note that the proposed vendor is a half or more, less expensive than the other bid as well, for people that are watching.
And we have worked with both, Patrick has worked with both, and he felt both of them were competent, so it was a price issue.
Anything else you'd like to add, Patrick? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and that's a contract, so, Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All Brian's got. Okay, well, let's see, next on the, item is Public Safety Committee, and the chair is not here.
Dan, we met, but there's nothing to carry forward.
Nothing to carry forward. Thank you, Phil. And 13 is Welfare Committee Recommendations.
We did not meet.
Did not meet. And how about the park board?
Well, we did meet, but we don't have anything to bring forward.
Thank you. Well, there was discussion that Mr. Garrity covered when he was here, so.
Yep, yep.
It was pretty much all the discussion that I read in your notes. And so, that brings us to item 15, which is, the board may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Paren 1, Paren lowercase g, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village of North Hudson, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the village or by the body with respect to litigation which, in which it is or is likely to become involved with respect to Riverside Drive North Duplex Lift Station property. Is there a motion?
Stan, I move to go into closed session.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is it Amy?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
And all in favor of going into closed session, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now in. Thank you, we are now in closed session. Thank you, and we are back in open session, there was no actionable items out of closed session, other than, the, it was basically a discussion for information, and I will now call the meeting adjourned at seven fifty-five. Thank you, everyone, have a blessed evening, and again, American.